Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this the May 19th regular meeting of the Zion City Council to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Frierson?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Mayor McKenney?
Here. Item number three, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Bremner, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
We'd all please join in the Pledge of Allegiance for the life. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir.
Pastor Langley from Christ Community Church is going to lead us in prayer this evening.
Heavenly Father, we pause at the beginning of yet another meeting acknowledging that we desire your help. Leadership is always a challenge, and especially in these times. So, we want to pray for the men and women in this room who have been entrusted with leadership responsibilities by the citizens of this city, and ask you to bless them with every virtue needed to lead well. An old hymn prays, "Give us wisdom, give us courage for the living of these days." And I pray for those graces: wisdom to make good decisions, courage to lead, patience, respect for one another, and for the seriousness of their calling, and every other virtue that is required to lead our city well, that we might prosper and serve one another, and please you in the process. We ask that tonight's proceedings would further that goal of a healthier, happier, more prosperous Zion. Guide the discussion, we ask, in your son's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Langley. Item number four, are there any agenda changes by any of the commissioners? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented? It's removed. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKenney?
Aye. Item number five is citizens' comments. All right. Thank you. Did you sanitize that?
Let it sit there for 38 hours.
Kathy Champagne?
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's good to see everyone. I hope you all stay safe and well. My comment tonight is about civil disobedience. One of the greatest acts of civil disobedience in recent times was Rosa Parks' refusal to relinquish her seat on the bus. But I'm not to speak to a Rosa Parks moment, rather a lemming over the cliff scenario. On April 30th, Governor Pritzker extended the stay-at-home executive order. This order relaxed previous restrictions on state parks, golf courses, and drive-in theaters, allowing them to open with limitations. Drive-in church services are now also permitted with limitations. This wasn't the case in March. None of the above were allowed. Yet, on social media, several religious organizations posted photos of drive-in church. Currently, at least one church is holding these in-house services. In March, a thread on social media stated that Christ Community Church had consulted at least one commissioner and several health officials regarding their drive-in services. Would that be you, Commissioner McDowell?
No.
Anybody here want to fess up? I guess you can't believe what you read on social media. But I'd like to point out that no commissioner has the power to overrule the mayor or the governor. That would be an abuse of power. And had you told them it was okay to hold services in an organization that you derive income from, that would have been a conflict of interest. The executive order was enacted to protect the residents of Illinois from a pandemic. Ignoring this order potentially put the health and possibly the lives of city residents at risk. That is dereliction of duty. You took an oath to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and to enforce the laws of the City of Zion. So help you God, you broke your word. Use of power, conflict of interest, dereliction of duty, a broken promise. You were elected to represent all citizens of Zion, not just those belonging to your church. I hope you can do that in the future. Right now, it appears you cannot serve two masters. Thank you.
Mayor, is it okay to respond to that? If you so choose. The pastor of Christ Community Church is here, and I wonder if you'd like to say anything in regards to that statement.
I could talk long, but I'll be brief. I would agree that Commissioner McDowell took a solemn oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States. In fact, I had the honor of holding the Bible that he held his hand on while he raised his other hand and took that solemn oath. And the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States guarantees the right to practice our religion without government interference. So, an argument could be made that Commissioner McDowell, in his activities as a pastor, is in fact doing just what he promised to do: upholding a long, centuries-long tradition of religious liberty. We have a medical doctor on our church board who agreed with the rest of the church's leadership that we would cheerfully, willingly hunker down at the beginning when our governor and national leaders urged us for the sake of our neighbors to flatten the curve. This MD, who practices medicine, emergency room medicine, and Racine, has concluded, as have many Americans, that the curve has been flattened, and that the same neighbor-love motivation that led us to close our building now leads us to open up, that people need people, and people need their church. And it isn't out of arrogance or selfishness that we are seriously considering holding public services again. It is out of love for God and love for neighbor. And I think Commissioner McDowell, like the rest of our church's leadership, have tried very, very hard to be respectful of government, to be principled. If we open up again for public services, we're going to do social distancing, and we're going to have plenty of protocols for keeping people at least as safe as when they go to Home Depot. So, I hope that helps.
All right.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity.
Yeah. I'd also like to take an opportunity and interject something here, as there's been some questions about City Hall being closed. And I think after the last special meeting we had, I had put on our Facebook page and website that City Hall is not closed. It's not open to the general public. We've closed our facilities, but business has still been in force since this pandemic started. And I know there's been some question about whether we should open up or not, but one of the things that I do as a mayor is I not only keep in touch with our Illinois Municipal League, who spends an inordinate amount of time with Governor Pritzker in his office, and the Illinois Municipal League oversees all, almost 1,300 cities in Illinois. And they're directors for us, and I just wanted to take an opportunity to read this small statement, so everyone knows where we're coming from as a city council and where I'm coming from as a mayor. "It is recommended that all communities comply with the governor's executive orders for the protection of their residents throughout this public health crisis. If a municipality wishes to deviate from the executive orders, municipal officials should consult with their legal counsel or retained attorney prior to taking any formal or informal action that would conflict with the executive orders, as that would create liability exposure to the municipal government or those municipal officials." So, we follow the guidelines by the governor and by the state constitution. They govern us. And so, our efforts to follow those orders are mandated by our governor, and we choose to follow those, and we understand that at this time, everyone's talking about their freedoms and what they would like to do. We'd all like to get back to normal. I certainly would. Since this order has been extended, it's been probably frustrating for everyone. It's hard on the businesses. It's hard on everyone personally. But I know that in taking this office, one of the things that we have to do as a council is we have to protect our employees as well as our residents here. So, thank you for your comments, Pastor Langley. Ms. Champagne, thank you for your comments as well. Item number six, consent agenda?
Approval of minutes of a special meeting held April 30th, 2020 at 4:00 p.m., and approval, but not released, of closed session minutes of a meeting held on April 30th, 2020 at 5:58 p.m.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKenney?
Aye.
Bills, vouchers 134951 through 135054 drawn on Huntington National Bank, total $510,825.
Is there a motion to approve the bills? I'll move to approve.
Second.
Clerk, discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKenney?
Aye. Item number seven, consider passing ordinance as follows: A, to enter into a ninth addendum to lease agreement for certain property commonly known as 122527 Street Zion, Martha's Nursery, and Learning Center per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor, Commissioners. Martha's Healthcare is requesting an annual renewal for a section of property used for the break-through. Stafford recommends that the lease be...
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKenney?
Aye. Motion passes. Item 7B, granting a variance from Zion Municipal Code Section 102-206, B2 for property at 2621 Gilam Avenue, zoning docket 20, Z is in zebra 6. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Terry Upton is seeking a variance to Section 102-2052, the Zion Municipal Code. Continue to single-family business in essential rooms and such. Mr. Upton was granted a variance in 2015 to continue to use, but due to a personal matter was only able to commence to use, and the variance became invalid. As of May 7, 2020, according to the zoning commission, we recommend to approve the variance.
Is there a motion to approve the grant of variance?
Make a motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKenney?
Aye. Motion passes. Item 7C, granting a variance from Zion Municipal Code Section 102-202, 2 for property at 2621 Gilam Avenue, zoning docket 20, Z is in zebra 7. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Upton seeking a variance to Section 102-202, the Zion Municipal Code, to allow ventilation, but drawing in the front area. The front exit does not have alley access. It would be part of parking in the front. Mr. Upton was granted a variance in 2015, but due to a personal matter was unable to proceed, business relation to the driveway, and the variance became invalid. As of May 7, 2020, planning and zoning commission recommends to approve the variance.
Is there a motion to approve?
A motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKenney?
Aye. Motion passes. Item number eight, discussion authorization, approval. Item 8A, tabulation of bids, 2020 annual fuel by two minutes and construction materials per Director Roberts.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. The bid opening for the annual fuel construction and construction materials was held May 14th, 2020. Attached are the tabulated bids results. Staff is requesting that council approve and accept the lowest bidder for these materials as presented and on the attached list. This is for the fiscal year 21.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there discussion? Questions?
Yeah, question about the bidders. I see that the bid from Peter Baker. Know what else seemed to bid on those materials? Is there any particular reason?
That one was actually approved from council last council meeting. I'm not sure why nobody else bid on it. Actually, Peter Baker was the only one that bid on any of this material at that time. So, that's why we approved Peter Baker on the asphalt, and then we requested to go out for a second bid for the rest of the material. As far as reasoning, I couldn't tell you.
Okay. So, the second round was just for the additional materials that went?
Just for the fuel, the diesel. So, I went ahead and put on this bid sheet, just because it's the full bid.
Got it. Thank you.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKenney?
Aye. Item number 8B, tabulation of bids, 2020 HMA patching program per Director Roberts.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Attached are the bid results for 2020 HMA patching program. Staff request and recommend awarding this project to the lowest responsible bidder, Chicago Land Paying Contractors in Lake Zert, Illinois, in the amount of $156,000. Funding for this project has been budgeted before within the MFT fund. Copies of the bid tabs are en filed with the City Department and with the Public Works Office.
I'll make the motion that we approve this patching program.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there discussion or questions?
I want to just say thank you to Director Roberts for being ahead of the curve on this and getting these bids out and getting these patching projects underway. So, thank you.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKenney?
Aye. Motion passes. Item 8C, consider proposal from Christopher Burke Engineering Services for the 2020 water main replacement project, and request permission to advertise for bids per Director Roberts.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Attached is a proposal from Christopher Burke Engineering Services for the proposed 2020 water main replacement project. Location of the project is within the alley west of Sheriden Road between 21st and 23rd Street. Existing water main was installed in 1928 and has been experiencing multiple breaks. Staff request and recommend the proposal for the engineering services from Christopher Burke for a cost of $69,900 and advertise for bids. This contract is for the 2020-21 fiscal year and would be budgeted a budgeted item within the water fund.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second. Are there questions or discussion?
Again, I'd just like to thank Director Roberts and the Water Department for being ahead of the curve and recognizing the need to replace this water main, as well as probably others throughout the year.
I just want to... This is the one that we've been trying to get done for the past, what, several years?
Yes, sir. This is the one that several times we've talked about within council. This is a two-block stretch. It's going to... Engineering probable cost on this one is around $700,000 to $800,000.
Right.
This request here, I just want to make sure everybody understands too, is this is just to set up the engineering, the drawings. There's no construction observation in this. And then, we will wait and see at the end of the year, towards August, October timeframe, to see if we can go forward with this project. We're currently trying to look at putting it in for the grant. I'm not too sure how well we're going to succeed with that, but...
We'll hear something. Thank you.
Part of that grant requirement is to have a shovel-ready project, so we wanted the drawings and the permits in hand.
Will the new main also last 90 years?
That one will probably last maybe 180.
Okay. Thank you.
And if we're still here to enjoy it, we can praise everybody.
Director Roberts, how long is the engineering good for?
We would have to resubmit. It's not... The engineering would be good for as long as we feel it's still applicable. But what'll come into play will be the IEPA permits. They last a year. So, before we go forward and give those permits, I want to make sure within that next following year or end of this year that we can go forward with that project.
Got it. Thank you.
If it does expire, it's just we have to go back in and resubmit. IEPA right now is running probably around six months, seven months to get the permit back.
And with everything going on with COVID, is there anticipated delays, I guess, with construction projects with IDOT and the like over in the county?
It's a tough one to answer, because right now, if you look out there, IDOT is going quite crazy with their roads. I'm not sure. We... Earlier in April, we did a bid for a road program for Zion, and we received some pretty good bids on that. But I think the contractors are ready to move.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKenney?
Aye. Motion passes. Item 8D, consider approval of installment agreement with Municipal Funding Solutions, LSC, per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. At a prior meeting, we received... I got approval from council to go to enter into a financing agreement with either Motorola or municipal funding based on their quotes, not to exceed 4% or $350,000. This is for the Starcom radios, a large portion of which, about 80%, of which will be reimbursed through E911 funds through the Bernie designing jet speed. I said I'd be coming back with the actual language of the agreement and the terms. That's what you have before you. At a 3.55% rate for $337,363, and I recommend approval of the financing agreement as presented.
Is there...
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any questions or discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKenney?
Aye. Motion passes. Item 8E, consider appointments of department heads and city officials per Mayor McKenney. Each year, we annually, after we appoint our department heads, after discussion with our commissioners about our respective department heads, we're going to reappoint our city and prosecuting attorneys. Delgado Law Group out of Berwyn, Illinois. Cheryl Spooner will remain the city clerk. Kirk Henderson, keep him in prayer and thoughts as he's going through surgery on his shoulder. The police chief, John Lewis, fire and rescue chief. Ray Robert, director of public works and engineering. Rich Ianson, director of buildings, zoning, and public property. David Nabel, director of accounts and finance. Mary Lou Hilterbrandt, ESDA field director. Rob Littner, assistant ESDA field director. And Eric Bradley as the city treasurer. Is there a motion to accept the department head appointments for the 2020 and 2021 year?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Is there discussion, questions? Clerk, I would just like to say before we call the roll, I just really appreciate the hard work that all of our department heads have put in this year. It's been an extraordinary year for us in so many ways. We're battling so much, as Pastor Langley talked about. I don't think last year, any of us could foresee that we were going to be dealing with a pandemic in our community. And yet, in spite of that, in spite of shortened resources and truncated working staff, our employees and our department heads have continued to work in good faith and with the integrity of making sure that we keep our services intact. So, I'd like to really thank all of you who I talked to, probably hear from me more than you like, but it's a great way for me to be able to know what's going on in the city by having the constant communication that I have with you on a weekly basis. So, thank you for your support and your work during my first year term as mayor. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKenney?
Aye. Item... Motion passes. Item number 8F, discussion regarding delaying of liquor license renewal per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. This is more of just our discussion item. We would come back at the meeting in June if any actual action was necessary on this. But we have our liquor licenses coming due June 30th of this year for a lot of our businesses. And with a lot of them being closed right now under orders, not being able to operate, I wanted to present something to try and take a little bit of pressure and not add additional stress to them. I don't believe it's the right thing to do to say, hey, give us $2,500 for your liquor license that's going to expire at the end of June, without them knowing whether they're going to be able to operate, recover that, or worrying about losing their liquor license. What I wanted to propose was doing an extension to September 30th of existing licenses pending the outcome of when we're allowed to reopen. When they're allowed to reopen, they would be required to renew their license. Per our city code, any partial year licenses, however, are prorated. So, that extension would also come with a nine-month liquor license fee rather than a 12-month. That would be in effect of about $7,000 total for the city for those licenses. And again, we're only talking businesses that are closed, gaming cafes, restaurants, that aren't able to do liquor, normal liquor sales, things that I think are not... We're not talking CDS, dual retail, standard retail licenses. So, if that's something that the council would entertain, I would like to work with the attorneys and Clerk Spooner on what we need to do to make that happen for approval at the meeting in June.
Have you talked to any of the business owners about this?
We have not, because I didn't want to...
Raise their votes.
I didn't want to make any promises or anything without having a concept first.
I don't have a problem. Is that myself?
I think it's a really... This is just me. I think it's a really good idea, and we've been exploring ways and talking about that for the last month with Dave and our economic development director, Sana Lito Brownson, about what things we can do as a city to help as we get reopened again, just to try to give them a hand with this, because everyone's suffering on a business and a personal relationship. So, this... Dave, this is a tremendous idea.
Yeah, I think it's great.
I think it's a reasonable move.
Thank you, Cheryl Spooner and Sana Lito Brownson. I would not say it was solely my idea, other than I agree to support it.
So, no motion is to be taken on this, just discussion for next, okay?
We'll discuss what's necessary, and then we can start drafting a letter that would go with what we'd normally do with the renewals, notifying businesses that we do after renewal about the extension.
All right. Thank all of you for your thoughtfulness. Item number 8G, consider approval of budget for fiscal years 2020 through 2021 per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. At the meeting at the end of April, we had a lengthy discussion about budget. discussion about budget. I don't want to recatch all of that, because it just depresses us all. But not that things are a whole lot better on this one. But part of that discussion was that we were going to be looking at some options, seeing what else we could trim from this, but that there was no way, or the recommendation was that we were going to be borrowing to fill the gap. Not a recommendation anyone wants, but a necessary way to continue providing operations. So what I did, just to make sure that we could keep moving forward in this process and not have, just present the same thing I presented last time, was you will see on page two, there's in other financing sources, about 10 lines up from the bottom. At the last meeting, that was $1 million to request the tax anticipation warrants that we issued just a week or so ago. That number is now 2.8 million. So I added an additional 1.8 million as basically a bookmark, a placeholder to zero out the budget deficit. The original budget deficit we presented was a little over $2 million. We cut $252,000 since the last meeting through discussions with Chief Henderson. We had an individual that is retiring early, or retiring, and he was able to restructure shifts and responsibilities so that we can continue operations without having to replace that position. So salary benefits saved a significant chunk of that. We also reduced some of the overtime in police based on being fully staffed this year compared to last year. There's also some concessions reflected here from the building department, which we'll discuss later on in the meeting, to about $10,000. And then there were some other changes to our favor. The retail strategies fee initially was all shown in the general fund, but that's actually going to be split among the TIF budget, so that was a reduction in here. So cuts of 252,000, the goal being that this is what we're agreeing to present and now, that we continue working, trying to find ways to cut. We continue zeroing out these revenue sources, trying to be optimistic that they may come in better than anticipated based on the impact of COVID. We're also continuing to push for county funding from the HEROES Act and the CARES Act for a share of that to help address some of the COVID issues. Continue to push on the Nuclear Stranded Act, the census results, et cetera, et cetera, so that by the time we get to a point where we would need to borrow, we hopefully chisel away at that to a less amount than the 1.8, 1.8 million. But I just wanted to reflect that in here, so we have something to possibly approve tonight, to go forward as a guideline and continue working on that for the rest of the fiscal year. Another thing that we're looking at is, we discussed the extension of liquor licenses, but we're also looking at revisiting our liquor codes for businesses to potentially open up, there's got to be a lot of discussion on this, but to open up additional licenses, additional fee changes, which might help that revenue piece as well. But anything that we're working on, hopefully will be either reductions of expenses or increases in revenue to reduce that 1.8. So it's kind of a worst-case scenario budget, but again, gives us some guidance to continue going forward at least.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the budget for May 1st to April 30th, 2020.
Second.
Are there questions or discussion?
I do have one question, Administrator Nabel. The Zion Walmart pledge sales tax, how much longer are we going to have to pony up for that?
So we have, we have about 18 months left on the amount to pay down, 18 to 20 months, depending on their sales. I am in discussions with their attorney and their tax department to try and extend that. I'm trying to say, okay, let's do it 40 months, but instead of a 40% contractual, instead of give back a 20%. So that's at 250,000, maybe this year would be 125,000. Next year, we would carry that over. It's one of those things, do we take the hit now, or do we extend a little bit? But since we're at a point now of just trying to bao time and continue operations, I'm looking at the extension possibility, and they're considering that as well. But we'd be looking at an end to this as-is sometime next fiscal year.
Okay. So either we get it over with and get the pain done, or stretch it out a little bit longer and suffer a little bit longer. Okay, thank you.
Question about approval tonight. So approval of this budget is not approving all of the increases that have been...
No, no.
...penetrating the line of...
Correct. The budget is just a guideline for operations. What we'd have to do is approve of the budget now kind of gives me a direction to be able to put any proposals together, which council would have to take action on individual increases at a later date.
Just wanted to double check. Thank you.
And you plugged the deficit budget with the tax anticipation warrants. So that's not something we have to do. You just plug that number in to allow us to do that?
Borrowing from some source.
Okay, all right.
Whatever that, if there's low interest and low interest loans that we can get as some other funding mechanism, or bond issues, or tax anticipation warrants, that's going to be perfect.
Yeah. Or the Stranded Act.
Or the Stranded Act, if we're able to get that revenue.
And I don't want to steal any thunder from the mayor, but I know he's been working pretty hard on the income side of it. Did you want to say anything about that?
Yeah, I would just like to say a couple things on this, since you brought it up. I mean, the budget, the discussion that we had with the commissioner that you suggested at our last special meeting was very productive. And I would say, we talked about this, one of the things, I was reluctant to have that meeting, because all of our commissioners weren't there. And one of the things that I've always, that I've said from the outset is that we wanted our government here to be transparent. I want our citizens to think that we're going behind doors and making deals and smoke-filled rooms and smoking cigars. So, but all of the commissioners after the meeting were updated immediately as to the content of the conversation. A lot of the budget-saving measures that Administrator Nabel talked about this evening were in the works. And I just have to give a lot of credit to our department heads and our commissioners for really drilling down and trying to make an impact so that we could continue to operate in these very difficult times. In terms of things that we're trying to do, we're still working, Dave, Administrator Nabel talked about the census. We're still counting on that to come through. Capital funding, continue to talk with our state legislators about getting capital funding. I think that looks pretty good. But as Commissioner McDowell would say, show me the money. We've got to wait for that. And with everything that's been happening, we've still been working those connections to make sure that we get some capital funding for our infrastructure. In addition to that, last week, Dave Nabel and I, I called him up very early in the morning, Administrator Nabel, sorry to be so informal. And it's interesting, after we have these meetings, to me, it's like replaying a game in my mind about how we can improve, or if things that are brought up, have we looked under every rock? Have we thought about everything? And we found out that the Lake County government had received an extraordinary amount of money to be able to help out local municipalities. And so we talked about crafting a letter to send out to our Lake County Board, which we did. All of the commissioners have a copy of that, and asking for some funding for the county to help us. My relationship with the chair of the Lake County Board has been good. Sandy Hart and Brett Paxton being in our area, and Diane Hewitt, they fought for us on some CBDG. Did I get those acronyms right? Those things still kill me. But they've worked with us in getting CBDG funds for our sidewalks and our infrastructure and other ways. They are receipt of this letter, and I already received responses from the chairperson, Sandy Hart, and Diane Hewitt about trying to help us out. So we're, believe me, we are, even though our offices are closed to the general public, we're still open for business, and we're still working hard behind the scenes to try to make things happen. So thanks for pointing that out, Commissioner. I'm going to talk about that in departmental commentary, but it's part of the budget, and we are still working as hard as we can to get funds here for the city of Zion, a city that's been underserved for way too many years. So without further ado, clerk, I guess, call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frasen?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number nine, departmental commentary. We're going to start with Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've brought this up in the past, but I'm still going to get the calls on how to dispose of branches. Branches can be disposed through your yard waste program. They can be put in your craft yard waste bags and your 32-gallon yard waste cans, or they can be bundled, no bigger than 18 inches in diameter. Branches can't be more than two inches in diameter, by four feet, and they have to be fine and refined where they'll hold water. So that's also information on the website if you will look at.
Director, I'd also have to say that one of the things that I've seen during this crisis, everyone has seemed to be very productive in their yards. And I know we've delayed having yard letters sent out. As I've been driving around town, I've seen Commissioner Holmes driving around town, Commissioner Fisher, all of the commissioners, Frasen, Commissioner McDowell, I've noticed that people are having time to work on their yards now. And that's a, that's a great thing. It's a great way to expend energy. So I keep getting people stopping by my house to offer me to hire me. My yard looks so good, so I'm out there quite a bit. So thanks for your efforts again, Director Ianson. Director Roberts?
Thank you, sir. I received kind of a notation, a bulletin from Lake County Stormwater Management just in the past four days. Just so everybody knows, Lake County has received anywhere between six and nine inches of rain in the last four days. They're expecting this Plains River to crest at the end of this week, which I know that's far west, but that does tributary to Kellogg Creek that runs up I B U A Bar and Bull Creek that runs down. So we'll see some impact on those waterways. Are you going to talk about M F T, or can I break? Go ahead. I didn't want to steal your time. No. So you're talking about increases or grants received from the state. I would like to make note that we did receive an extra $268,000 in our M F T account to go towards Rose. The memo we received was a rebuild bond fund that's, we're looking at, Zion is looking at two dispersals each year for the next three years for a total of $1.6 million. That's additional to our normal M F T. So we might be able to get some things.
That's great. That's great news.
That's all I got.
That's, I think that's good enough. Stop where you're, quit where you're at.
That's right.
Director, Administrator Nabel?
You give the good news. I'll give it back. I just want to remind everyone that as we hopefully move out of this crisis, start getting things more back to normal. Currently, we have a stay on all water shut-offs. We haven't been issuing shut-off notices, penalties for late payment, et cetera. However, individuals are still responsible for that bill. I want to make sure that everyone keeps that in mind as we go forward. Again, there's no timeline that we're looking at, but we're going to start implementing shut-offs again. We'll most likely do a phased-in approach to make sure individuals have time, because everyone's impacted financially different by this. However, if you're having difficulty now making your payment, that compounding by not paying the bill is only going to make it more difficult when it is time to come due. The township, I would recommend people contact the township for resources or connection to resources. There's a lot of resources available right now. If they anticipate that it's going to be a difficulty to get that process started early. Also, if you're eligible for payment agreements with the city, and that's with a two-year good payment history, we would consider that as well to spread out the cost of those payments over time. I just want to make sure that as we come out of this, people aren't faced with another crisis by all of a sudden having to scramble to figure out how to make sure that their utilities are still on. So it's better to approach early than try and deal with it after the fact. So I just want to make sure people are thinking of that as we move forward.
Administrator Nabel, really good point. And for those people who are having financial issues at this time with a city account, the time is to call now, not after the bill has gone to collection. If you're having issues, call our Accounts and Financing Office, and you'll have an ear there and some resolutions as to how we can handle this. The other number in addition to the township, the United Way, has a 211 number that's available in the event that people are having a difficult time with housing, food, and finances at this time. They're connected to our township. We have our own Facebook page now that's a Zion COVID virus 19 update Facebook page. And we update that information on it on a pretty regular basis for our residents and our businesses, of programs that are available to help them at this time. And again, this is information that we get from the Illinois Municipal League, the Lake County Municipal League, coming from the governor's office. And we share that information. Commissioner Fisher and I have been sharing that on the We Love Zion page, so that everyone knows where they can go for help for different items. So again, that United Way number is 211, very simple to call, and they offer a tremendous amount of help. And I know at the last county board meeting that I was at for the Housing and Development Commission, the state had awarded the United Way some funds to be able to help our residents in Lake County. So again, that number is 211. And if you're having issues paying your water bill here in Zion, please call our Accounts and Finance Officer and talk to somebody there, and they can help you.
Mr. Mayor, I hope it's not out of order for me to say this, but our church has often helped people who found themselves in a pinch too. And I'm sure that we're not the only church that people could turn to. So that should be in the mix.
Okay. We'll keep that in mind. I know one of the things that I've seen during this crisis is that you see people trying to help one another. And the one thing that I would hope and pray for as we get on the other side of this is that we don't forget our humanity when things go back to what we call consider normal. I've always seen this in the country from the time I was a very young man, that when there's a crisis, how people will rally together. And then when that crisis subsides, everyone seems to content to go back to their old ways of dislike and hate and not wanting to help. So please, I think this is a lesson for all of us right now. We're being shown away by our higher power, how we are supposed to help one another, whether times are good and definitely when times are bad. Attorney Vasselli, we haven't asked you to say anything about our department head meeting since you've been reappointed. Is there anything that you would like to say? And I know I'm putting you on the spot.
No, please. Thank you for the reappointment. Everyone, please stay safe. And obviously, if you need anything from me, if you know how to get ahold of me, please feel free to call. Thank you for the opportunity.
Do our commissioners have any?
I do have a small thing. Something, you mentioned we're pushing information out on social media.
Yes.
Basically reposting information from either the state or from the Lake County Public Health Department. And one of the items I think is particularly important is that people understand what asymptomatic transmission means. And so I'm going to ask a quiz. I'm going to ask a quick question. Does anybody recognize the name Mary Mallon?
Is that kind of way to dream?
So you understand what asymptomatic, an asymptomatic carrier is? So you understand what asymptomatic, an asymptomatic carrier is. So for those who don't know, Mary Malin was born in Ireland in 1869. She moved to the United States, and between 1900 and 1907, she worked as a domestic in New York City for several prominent families. The problem is, is that those families started coming down with typhoid. And this became a mystery for the public health officials in New York. And so eventually, through investigation and contact tracing, they identified Mary Malin, a cook, as the source of this typhoid. And eventually, she was arrested as a public health threat and held in quarantine for three years. The whole time, she denied that she was the source of this disease. So after those three years, the doctors and the public health officials agreed to release her if she agreed not to work as a cook. And so she went to work as a laundress. She said she would not work as a cook. She wasn't able to keep that promise because of the economic conditions at the time. And so she subsequently changed her name, and basically she became a person on the run. She would work at a household until people started getting sick, and then she would resign and move on to another house. She did this for several years under different aliases. In 1915, she started an outbreak at the Sloan Hospital for Women in New York City. She infected 25 people and two of them died. They eventually caught up with her. She was arrested and quarantined at the North Brother Island in New York on March 27th, 20, excuse me, 1915. And she spent the remainder of her life there. She spent the next 23 years there and passed away on November 11th of 1938. And that whole time, she never felt ill. And so when we talk about asymptomatic transmission, we're talking about this kind of scenario. And the problem with the COVID-19 is that people can be carrying the disease and feel no effect until it's too late. So please follow social distancing, wash your hands, please wear a mask if you're going into a store or a restaurant, and please keep public gatherings under 10 people until we get the infection rate down. Just a little history lesson.
Thank you very much. I was starting to think when you said Mary, what was her last name?
Malin.
I was wondering if I went to school with her, but a little bit before my time. But since you said that, I'm going to clean my hands off here. Any other commissioners have any comments? Okay, item number 10 is announcements. On May 25th, city offices will be closed for the holiday, and we hope that everyone has a safe, hopefully it's a dry holiday. Be nice for it to dry out a little bit, but I almost feel like this is God's way of keeping us inside and protecting us a little bit. I call it COVID weather. On June 2nd at 7:00 PM, there's a tentative Zion City Council meeting scheduled. We will keep everyone abreast of that, apprised of when we will have the meeting. And on June 16th at 6:15 PM, we have a Zion Township meeting. And at 7:00 PM on June 16th, a Zion City Council meeting. Item number 11, closed session pursuant to 5ILCS 120-2, open meeting for the discussion of collective bargaining. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?